Call me in to work, please join me in the litigations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Precious and merciful Lord, continue to bless this Linsburg community of people you have gathered together. Give the members of our community grateful hearts for the blessings we enjoy. Lead us to obey the laws we have established and give us concern for the privileges and responsibilities of every community member. We especially thank you this evening for Bethany College, Bethany Home, Linsburg Community Hospital and Health Clinic, our churches, our public schools, and the many businesses that are part of our community. During these difficult economic times, guide and direct us to work together to support all these institutions and businesses that make our community such a great place to live and work. Guide those who are gathered here at this council meeting to conduct the business of our community. Give them wisdom for difficult tasks, sensitivity to the needs of our community, and keep them mindful of their sacred trust in public office. Lord, help us to recognize what is your will as we make decisions and give us the courage to follow your will and trust your promises of presence and love. Be present in this meeting and in our community. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. Enjoy the games.
Thank you.
Does anybody wish to raise their public input? Seeing none, amendments to the agenda, I will offer up the first one. Item D is to be struck from the consent agenda and appointments will be handled separately. Are there any other amendments to the agenda? Do we have to vote on that? Vote on a change to the... What is your desire on the amendment?
Second.
Been moved to seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Mayor's report. We'll start off with our council appointment. We have Mark Prezity with us tonight. Mark has consented to join and fill the term by Becky Anderson. We're very excited to have Mark join us on council. This will be Mark's first meeting and with that, we're going to have him swear again by the clerk of jury and then we'll take photos.
You want the side, I'll be on the side. And if you would raise your right hand, will you solemnly affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of state councilmember for the city of Linsburg so help me God? Congratulations.
One more.
Why can't I have the person?
Forget it. Yes. Welcome, Mark, you have to kiss.
Second item of business on the mayor's report, references to incidents that occurred at Bethany College this weekend where there were some racially offensive messages in that that were tropped, written on the sidewalk. A few of these messages involved Linsburg specifically stated "Linsburg" in the messages. With that, President Jones called me. We did discuss, you know, what they had done, what they had seen, you know, involved the police in the matter at that point with their campus security and that. And I told him, you know, in no uncertain terms, it was very disturbing to me. Something that would not be tolerated and Linsburg should not be tolerated in our nation either. So, I guess I just want to report out to council and the public that I did take a stance, you know, against the messages and the things that were written on the sidewalk at Bethany College. Again, it's just something that will not be tolerated and should not be tolerated in Linsburg or our nation. So... You're all welcome to join me. They are having a prayer and sing-along vigil tonight at 9 o'clock. I believe Greg said him and I are both going. You're welcome to join us at the Pearson Chapel Show of Unity and that, you know, for the college and for Linsburg. So, if you can make it, we'd love to see you there. September meetings, please keep in mind the September 20th meeting, the West Star Open House from 5 to 7 at the Sunstrom Building. This is concerning the line upgrade and substation feeder line upgrade that will be happening later this fall and spring. This will be a public meeting for the public to see where the line is going to go and what the process will be, you know, obstructing that line to get us a more reliable power source for our Linsburg community. We've had several outages with the feeder from Person, the alternate feeder from Salina. That both are very aged process and this will be from the west off the new line that's out there that's less, a little less than a mile. New line that should give us a very reliable power source for many years ago. So, please join us on the 20th. Again, West Star Open House from 5 to 7 next door. Last call to see who, if anybody else is interested in going to the league conference. Greg, when is that again?
October 8th through 10th. But it's live, yeah.
October 8th and through the 10th?
Yes.
At this point, Jerry, Rick, Greg, and myself are the known ones that are going.
Yeah, yeah. Did you get that? He was looking right at you.
I thought he was just looking at us.
Keep that in mind. Let us know if there's a possibility you could join us there. Lots of good interaction with other communities, you know, and their leadership, but also things that the league brings forward and topics that they do that are very timely to give the basket.
It'll lead to that early soon, so everyone won't have to sleep in their car.
Okay. Unless you enjoy sleeping in your car, please let Greg and Jerry know as soon as possible. Moving on to the consent agenda, items A, D, and C. What is your desire?
Motion to adopt.
I have a motion to adopt. Is there a second? Then moved to seconded. Roll call, please.
Kelly, yes. Penny, yes. Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item B, appointments, tree board. Do you want to handle these all together or do you want to handle them individually, Kerry?
That's up to you.
Okay, we'll handle them individually. Tree board appointment, Martha Daniels?
Here.
Martha's here?
Where are you? Oh, good. Thank you.
Probably have to stand for David.
But I totally won't go that long.
Martha will be joining the tree board. If she is so appointed, what is your desire?
Motion to approve.
Second. Then moved to seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Welcome Martha to the tree board. We'll be taking pictures of everybody afterwards. Planning and zoning commission, Dale Wetzel?
Here. Here.
Dale is here. Dale has agreed to join us on the P and Z. What is your desire?
To move approved.
Second.
Then moved to seconded. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We also have design review board and board of zoning appeals, Marv Anderson?
Sorry, Marv could not make it tonight, Bill?
Marv is not here. What is your desire on it, Marv?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Moved to seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, moved. Last one is EMS. We have two that have passed their test. Right you. David Gordita and Julia Newman. David?
Is here.
Julia, Julia Fidnath. Okay. What is your desire?
Motion to approve.
Then moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved to seconded. Discussion?
Yes, my question is, how is Julie going to make herself available within the...
Did you hear the questions she did? EMS.
I mean, I'm sure you discussed that and it's all straightened out, but I was curious.
Well, they come here and they say it's safe to send her to leadership.
Okay.
One of the things that we were trying to address with the... They actually kind of say in that... So, next year, or the year after, when a new building is built, I'll take care of itself. At this time, let's go forward, everybody would. We wish to have these individual, Jerry, and as a group. As a group. All new members, please join us up here. Everybody want to join us? All council members? Come on up.
Get up there.
Come on up, everybody. Thank you very much.
Don't be up to you.
You are coming up. Everybody step up. You'll have to squeeze together though, so... Okay, you guys over there, you know.
Just stand right there.
Yeah. Dave, can you move that way?
Yeah.
Are we semi-centered under the...
No.
Yeah, but we'll Photoshop that later.
All right?
All right. Thank you all for not doing that. We do appreciate it. You're coming down to weigh in. Jerry, would you please update any drop box?
Yep.
We'll work to continue to fill positions. Kerry, anything planning and zoning?
No.
Full business? I see none. New business? Moving to ordinance 5006. What is your desire?
Motion to adopt ordinance number 5006, the authorization or authorizing issue, issuance of general obligation refunding improvement laws.
Second.
Then moved to seconded. Do we should speak to this of all Greg or does he have...
I would entertain any questions.
Greg is asked for questions under any of the council?
This is for the drainage projects, correct?
Well, it's actually refunding a prior issue and then issuing additional debt for the drainage, what's called the Garfield Drainage Improvement Project.
If we, whatever we do, or if we do the waste water, storage water utility, does this debt go underneath that? At that point, is it going to go under that fund? So, that would be a separate fund, right?
That would be a separate fund. I guess the best way I can answer that is it could. I'm not saying it would. That hasn't been really part of the discussion. It could, but we would also have to look at the amount of debt service also, the amount of revenue if we establish the storage water utility that that would actually generate. Because you could issue a level of debt that while you're doing is servicing that loan payment for 20 years and that's something that you're going to do in a storage water utility. So, I think that's a question that's probably better answered if the storage utility comes into play. Greg, why don't you have a discussion? For those people, comms, who are watching this on television and people who are in the audience as well, we have discussed this at length. We're moving it on tonight.
Thank you. Penny?
This, this one includes some funding for some, some of the lung fasciobraviation with the, their square culverts or something. Is that right?
Well, the, what we call the Garfield Drainage Project, and it's a little later in the agenda, it includes restrictor plates at the Coronado, culverts, box culverts there, channel improvements between Coronado and Garfield Street and then converting the tube culverts from, well, converting them to concrete box culverts at Garfield Street.
And for that, this is for the funding?
Yes.
And then the other portion is refinancing.
Right. Thank you.
Additional questions of Greg or anybody else in the... Which staff members? Carry now the roll call, please.
Kelly, yes. Penny, yes. Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item 9B, resolution 13F16, authorizing American Civil General Obligation Laws.
Move approved.
Second.
Then moved to seconded. Discussion?
We received a very favorable rating. For our listening audience, our rating is very favorable.
Yeah, from Moody's Investor Service, and I would like to, if I may, introduce your aide, Brett Sugar, with George K. Bond. He worked with us on the rating of his bond issue. He is the financial advisor for the city. We ended up with an A2, and I know the last time we had bond ratings, it was an A2. And we were pulled by Moody's, the only way we could get a higher rating was to get bigger. Very, very positive and favorable rating, which is an investment grade rating. I don't know if there's... I know I was at reception and someone said, "I can't believe the city of your size got an A2 rating." So...
We had a, we had a conference call with Moody's and your staff and Greg already did a great job representing your city. They did reaffirm that A2 rating, which is actually a few steps above the minimal investment grade rating and helped that with the sale of the bonds. Very, really very impressed with your city, I think. While it could have been $15 million, you know, an hour call, I was asking, it was too much. Certainly.
Well, we may have come here visiting.
I think you want to come visit.
Yeah.
Are there other questions?
Well, I just pointed out one thing on the, on the bond sale itself, the true interest cost ended up being about 1.9...
The true interest cost ended up being about 1.96%. I think preliminarily, we were at like 1.99, closer to 2%. So, the rating helped and the market got a little bit better. We were able to save as much money as we initially thought, plus a little bit more. I think our original present value savings numbers was 8.3% over the refunded principal. We added up to 8.7%. Very positive result. And we were able to fund the new money portions for the wastewater portion with $580,000 in geo bonds. And we were able to reduce the rest of it with a pre-operated rate of some of the bonds for more than they're next up.
Please congratulate some of your efforts.
Congratulations.
Other questions?
If there's any, any more questions, we'll ask.
Less more than I normally get, so...
Is that good?
Roll call, please.
Kelly, yes. Penny, yes. Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Item 9C, League of Kansas Municipality, municipalities, sorry, voting delegates. Looking for two voting delegates and two alternates.
I want to make Greg and Jerry.
Second. Are they voting or are they alternates?
I want to take some voting on that, that answers mayor.
Me too. I think they're voting. Have they or not?
Voting. I have to, voting delegates.
We have motion for Jerry and Rick. Voting delegates. And a second? Was there a second? Looking for a second? We have a second. Discussion? All those in favor of Jerry and Rick as voting delegates, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Now we need two alternate voting delegates.
Can we walk and we vote?
Because who would give us attention? That's all I remember.
Greg.
Did I just diss you guys?
Yeah, it's okay.
I nominate Greg and Bill to be the non-voting members to only vote in extreme of...
I'll second. Been moved to seconded, then Greg and I are non-voting members at the Kansas League of Municipalities. Any discussion? Carry now. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Thank you to those that are voting delegates for long-term. Base map, boundary survey. Brett Sugar.
First step of the common trail extension project is to do engineering. We plan to do that in 2017. The first step in that engineering is to base map and do a survey of the area for the trail being built. We'd like to do that in pleasant weather this fall and step it up rather than approve this basemapping in January of 2017 in the kind of waiting and dealing with the weather, which will hold us up most likely. We'd like to go ahead and get it done. I have money in community development. We do plan to use industrial development, community development funding for this phase of the project. I have some left over in 2016 to cover the costs. And I ask that we go ahead and get started.
What is your desire, council?
I'll make the motion that we approve $12,300 to Howard Wilson Engineering.
Second.
Been moved to seconded. Discussion? I will say that I'm getting people, many people coming and excited about the extension of the trail. You know, when is it going to happen? When's the next section? How is that going to happen? I think the, the trail has been a great addition, you know, one of the really great projects in Linsburg. So, appreciate that we're headed in this direction and look forward to the next one after this, so... Any discussion on the motion to approve $12,300 to Howard Wilson Engineering to do base, uh, base mapping and boundary survey? Roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Penny, yes. Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Mark? Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. Moving on to street department truck bids.
We've had a couple items that are on the cap and proof for some years and they, they put them on a budget that came right down to it. They didn't rise to the level of need to be replaced yet. We have 2006 dump truck that we had some trouble with. We've got less than perfect bed on it, but a long shot. Anyway, we would like to replace the dump truck. Surely on fire in the last one. We have $22,000 available between a tow truck and a, and a steel truck. That leaves $12,878 still to leave. And we have budgeted for restrictor plates, which are now going to be covered on the Garfield Street project, drainage project, so that might be available with some difference. So, we would recommend a motion to approve along the car for $22,102 for the trucks. And then rest truck equipment for $12,776 for that.
Council, what is your desire?
I'll make the motion to approve $22,102. A portion of that, that will be the whole amount along the car for and $12,776 to midwest truck equipment. Can you vote for the same motion or do they need to be separated?
You can. You can. Or is, is there a second?
Second.
Questions? Eamonn?
I guess I'm not clear why, why this wasn't applied to your budget.
It got dropped between, it used to be a street truck and then a link of electric truck and then it just got, it ended at the point I didn't know what to do with that. The old truck should have been on there.
This is like, runs around the street. I mean, it's a flatbed.
Yes.
I think it's interesting and no answers required that there's quite a difference in what's being offered as a trade-in for...
$12,000 here or $8,000.
I was surprised. It's a wrong, it's a different, one dealer to the next.
Everybody satisfied with the... With the chassis?
They do offer same warranty on heavy-duty vehicles that are over one ton because they do want the other vehicle scratched, right? You guys don't take this thing off road very much, do you? Like in dirt and mud and sand. They did quote you one with a open differential, not a limited slip. If it's got ghouls on the back, it's going to get stuck real easy.
I need that.
Yeah.
I don't know if I want to revisit for that. This, and I've been trying to get these bids together for five months now. People, the guy, one guy's in Arizona that won't be home for another six weeks. I don't know. I don't think we've ever pledged this, like the permission. So, I would say we're probably good with this one. We've got long without it.
Long as you're happy, I'm happy.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kelly? Yes. Penny?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Item carried, item S, is the Garfield Drainage Improvement Engineering Proposal.
This is a project that we just discussed under the bonding question. It is the restrictor plates on the Coronado, the channel grading and then replacing the tubes on Garfield Street. This is the engineering portion for Wilson and Company. $60,173 to, for the engineering.
What is your desire, council?
Make a motion to approve $60,173 to Wilson and Company.
Is there a second?
I second.
Discussion? Will this be all engineering that's needed? Does this get us to, to construction or just culinary?
It gets you to construction. I'm not sure if there will be inspection services or...
Is there, this is construction documents, bid documents?
Yeah.
This is fully engineered project.
Thank you. This concludes the engineering across the, the, from Coronado to the Titan floodways.
Yeah. From my own edification, the restrictor plates we're talking about on Coronado Bridge, they go under Coronado just north of Swenson on Coronado, there are seven, uh, concrete poles.
Yeah.
And, uh, this is a plate on them so that you could slow the flow of water going into the channel that goes to Westview.
Okay.
And wouldn't cause the flooding back in 2000.
Plates are manual plates?
Yes, the street department will be responsible for monitoring high-water events and putting plates in and taking them out.
Somewhere through all this, I lost track of where the plates were going to go, so.
Thank you.
Just move the switch.
Who owns the bridge?
It's Scotty Bridge.
Working on the bid on the county?
The county work with us.
Okay.
Not just a bigger one.
Okay. Other discussion points? Roll call please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Penny?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ewell?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you Tim. EMS? Is there gonna be a bill? Greg talks about.
Well, I apologize for being late to the study session, I was on the phone with the architect. Right now, as you saw in the packet, the bid, the low bid was about 140,000 dollars over the project budget. Uh, working, trying to work with rural development on this from the standpoint to see if we can potentially value engineer the project. In other words, find those items that potentially could be modified or removed to reduce the cost of the project to bring it in line with, with the budget. Uh, conversations have been had with Weeds and Company, who is the low bidder on the project. First, to make sure that they included everything from a design standpoint was included in their bid and they confirmed that it was. Second aspect of that conversation covered whether they would be willing to look at value engineering the project. They would be willing to, with caveat that if the project does not move forward, that they at least get compensated for their tiny expense and try to help value engineer the project. Uh, the challenge right now is getting, uh, direction from rural development. Some of the things we're potentially looking at is, are the elevator. When it was originally designed, it was a different elevator than what the state architect says we have to have, which increased the cost of the project, which increased the cost of the backup generator. Additionally, the original fire suppression system that was specified had to be upgraded per the state architect, which added to the cost. It's the opinion of the architect that they originally specified, when I say architect, I guess I need to clarify. The architect that we hired to, to design the project felt that it met code. The state architect felt it needed to be, uh, beefed up. What, we're in the process right now to see if the state architect will allow the project to be value engineered. Talking with rural development on Friday afternoon, state architect's out till, I don't know, the end of this week, but definitely not available, was on the phone with the architect, the, uh, from Park Architecture, the firm hired by the city just right prior to the study session this evening and, and that's what we're, we're trying to, to do. Like, I guess the question I would have for you as council is, do you want us to continue to pursue a value, value engineer type project for this or do you want to just reject all bids? I mean, that's the option.
Would you please define for me again, value engineering?
Look at, look at those items within the design of the building that could be modified in a way to reduce the cost but still meet the purpose of why you're constructing the building. We did that on the Substream Building. Because the bids came in over and we worked with it, in fact, it's the same, the low bidder on this is the same company that constructed the Substream Building. So, they're willing to do it, we've gone through the process with them before.
Is this an unattainable amount?
Well, I guess all the bids are well, we're willing to give up. You know, if we, right now it has a basement. We could give up the basement, then we, you know, network out the elevator, then you can, the generator, you can, the backup generator can be downsized and some of the electrical needs could be downsized and you're probably in the ballpark of where you need to be. But that, that space was also going to serve as a training room. It was also going to serve as a secure storage space for, for radio equipment, for not just the investment, public safety total. And it was also going to serve as an emergency operations location in event of a disaster. So, is that something that we would be willing to give up? And I'm not asking for that answer right now, but those are some of the trade-offs we're gonna have to look at to see if this is where we want to get that building so we can get it constructed.
Otherwise, you go back to a clean sheet of paper? Or it would be put off or we wouldn't get certain funding or what? What would that be then?
Well, if we go back to a clean sheet of paper, we can just take it all the way and even invest it with the architect and throw it, the, the architect we hired. And throw it out, because they're gonna wanna hold your contract and design a holding of building. You know, value engineering it probably is at least the most economical approach in my opinion to see if we can get to a solution.
I would like, um, from my perspective, it sounds like you are on the path that you believe to be correct and may not let us stray on a project like this before. Seems to me it makes a lot of sense, let's just look at a less expensive way to do this from the contractors.
I think coming back with a list of value engineered items and it's keep the basement, lesser elevator and a different, you know, sprinkler, takes care of it or if it comes down to it, let the council decide, you know, at that point, we can do it with the basement, do the other things that pairs of dollars that we can get within our contract, so I think coming back with options for council makes a lot of sense.
Well, the challenge in this project in value engineering is that the state architect has a lot of decision-making authority. So it's, so it's gonna be, we can identify, probably identify the items. The challenge is going to be, since we don't get a visit directly with the state architect ourselves on this, is convince the R D staff to convince the state architect that what we're proposing as alternatives are reasonable solutions and still meet code.
As far as the grant with USDA, we're locked in, I mean, that, that's it.
Well, when it's a loan.
Well, loan, I'm sorry.
We could get potentially, um, some additional funding, but to, even if they would come up with 140,000, we're looking to, to services debt and cash flow through the, through the ambulance fund. They don't generate enough additional, uh, cash flow to cover an additional 140,000 dollars in the debt on the project.
I think what I'm hearing and I think the council will keep it and start thinking about it, just the basement. In the end, if they come down to basement in, basement out, and, uh, I mean, I wanna look at all options and that, but what you just said about the state architect and everybody else, if he's gonna want to put in a heavier elevator and change the sprinkler system, I don't know, he's gonna come back and say, oh, I guess it was, you know, a bad day that day and I'll take those things away, so I think if they come down to basement.
Well, one of the, on the first floor, basically, you're looking at a garage and residential space. It has a communal living space, it has separate shower and restroom facilities and shepherd, shepherd, separates sleeping quarters with the idea that if at some point in time when we have to go to a paid service, we're already geared up from a facility standpoint. Well, the state architect's willing to us to beef up the level of fire suppression, when I say fire suppression, I'm talking to sprinkler system. A whole industrial level sprinkled building. In visiting with the architect, one, it's a residential space and not a public space, the building's not open to the public. We could, right now, in his opinion, put five eight, two layers, two layers of five-eighth sheet rock on each side of the wall and downgrade the fire suppression system because fire codes say you only have to have a fire barrier that lasts an hour. Well, with two double thicknesses of five-eighth sheet rock on each side of the wall and a lesser, more commercial or residential type sprinkler system, that's gonna reduce the cost compared to an industrial type system. That's an option that would have significant savings, whether the state architect will do that or not. But those are some of the things we've talked about potentially doing.
Because what, what do we use, what do we have now for, I mean, that's safety center for, um, for training, but what, what do we have for disaster command center?
Uh, the first location is the safety center, I mean.
So above ground?
Mm-hmm.
Like, just slightly be taken out as any other building?
Yeah, we don't have a hardened facility.
Or is that going to be a hardened facility or was it just gonna be a basement?
Well, it's gonna be a basement, but it'd be a lot harder than, I can't remember what four of that thing was.
Well, I guess it's, yeah, because you're a park ambulance disaster.
Well, no, that's just gonna be concrete slab.
The back end.
The back end. Front end will be the, the garage space for the ambulances. On the east side of the building, the west side is a residential space.
Well, we've gone over this also before and we have determined as a council that we need this facility and it seems to me like the choice right now is for you to go ahead with this and then we may have to revisit it again.
Come back to us, Greg, with options on value engineering, I think that's what I'm hearing across the room.
Okay.
What's your time for, Lonnie?
I would love to give you a time frame, Mike, you know, since I was three minutes late to the study session visiting with the architect, that, um, I don't have a timeline for you, wait and hear back from the state architect.
I mean, on the morning.
11:59?
All right, I, we don't have a second session, I do it.
No.
Department reports. Let's start with all your work.
Well.
Thank you. How many do we have? Four? What else?
We have four, we have four, you wanna talk about what else? I'm still waiting, I'm just hoping to get back in report on, before I talk to you about the alternative method of making it on our water tower. We had them out, we've been inspected and I was hoping for a report by, except that I didn't get it. There are some issues that we hadn't been aware of. One, the, you can't even access the entryway into the tower at this point because the the hatch cover is wedged up, so we didn't get a great inspection on it. Anyway, I that was gonna be my plan, I just figured everything that tell us and what the cost would maybe, still think it's gonna be a liable, um, method compared to 140,000 dollars paying this, this year and then, you know, who knows when the flash and fracture which ten year, I don't need explaining again, so.
I.
I think overall we can save money with this and I'm sorry, I don't have the number for you.
With this, you're talking about, they will have a contract with, for a year with.
They will go in and completely deal with payers and we'll pay them a yearly fee for it as opposed to, we say, we pay for the painting right now, which we're budgeting for 140,000 in 2017 and then we still have maintenance agreements on them 17, 18 hundred dollars a year, so. There's a lot of money just that goes into maintenance on these towers and I think, you know, maybe a little heavy and it's too, but the first time that, uh, we would save money, we're, no, we're all good.
We pay the company, it needs a, a yearly maintenance fee?
Yeah, and it's, the way it's worked in the past is you get a five-year warranty and if you do the maintenance agreement on it, then the, the.
So do they come out and check it once a year then?
Every other year.
So when did the
They were here this year.
opening get wedged open, the door get wedged open?
I just found out about, so I assume it, they were here, they were inspected, they, they, in, uh, probably soon, maybe they and I, you know, nothing said about it then, they were inside and now you can't get inside, so I would assume they did it when they left. And that's the company that I wanna replace. You know, I let the, the lights, about that.
Edinburgh, you open in a second.
Absolutely.
Uh, we had pretty good washing this last week, stormwater in LA. Um, did you feel it went well, sponsors?
I thought it was great, uh, we, I think we got two and a quarter to two and a half inches in, you know, fortified bed or whatever. And, uh, you know, that's huge for rainfall, we had spots, we had barricades up. Paris Cole was probably the worst Swenson Columbus. But they all ran really quickly, I mean, about the time we could put barricades up, we were just about ready to start back in line taking them down again. In less than an hour, I think everything was fast forward.
So, I actually generated another question, I'm gonna go with the, the Kansas go up, go ahead.
We never got the runoff on tables like prior, I was really expecting, I, I thought two hours down the road we'd go where they'd be in trouble and we did not get that, so.
The mid Kansas go up lot, after that rain, there was so much sand and, I mean, it was inches in the street.
Yeah, I mean, thankfully it up next morning before I did, get to look for light.
Okay, but I mean, that's gonna happen over and over, that's, I know you told me that that's, we're okay, but I'm telling you, just in my mind, and Rick and I've had this conversation, it appears it's always gonna be on the street. Even in dry weather, they're gonna drag all that stuff out.
I agree, yeah. I've talked to them and I've told them it's not the solution and that was their interim answer.
Okay.
I mean, if you wanna directly do.
I think wherever we get to that, I would like to see us have a better control over what, what those permeable surfaces that Gary's working on and all of that, we, we should have some control over what they put down, I think, from a stormwater point of view.
Well.
I would be, I think we have to get.
You know, one of the questions here is, um, in order to achieve the result we want on Lincoln Street, we have to tell them to go to a less permeable surface, but I think the, what we got back from Wilson that anything that's driven over is not gonna be considered 100% impervious, so, isn't that right?
Yes.
So, I was, I was feeling a little bit bad about pushing it, knowing that the stormwater utility's coming, but now with that. utility's coming, but now with that latest thing from Wilson, that, that's all.
I'd be curious if you opened your storm drains?
We have, it's a little fast, it's gonna happen. We have not had a problem with that. I'd say that, that rain might give it a little up here.
The other one might involve the other team, and it's just frustrating to me as an ongoing guy, but we have so many people that blow all of their grass into the street no matter what.
And make no effort.
Yeah, and I think that, isn't that not a violation of some city code news?
And what should we do about that? Call you?
Uh huh.
Cause really, the ones who do it regularly are putting a lot of stuff out there and then goes into the drain. I have another question about the water tower. I can't speak for the rest of the council or anything else, but I'd still like to see something written on it.
That's, yes.
I would direct it to put that in the budget for next year, so that it, it will.
When I was a kid, there was some written on it.
Yeah. It was a written on the street again.
Say ghetto gag.
Well, thank you.
I have a question, um, to change subjects just a little bit. Uh, North McKinley, was that a mill and overlay or a chip seal?
North McKinley was, no, overlay, no, that was chip seal.
Think it was just a chip seal, because they did, they're still all in perfection.
No, we did, uh, yeah, we did Swenson and third and.
Sweeping.
Sweeping. The rest were chip seals.
This new stuff that they gave us, I went over there, look, there's gravel all over the signs and stuff, I mean, it's.
Well, that's all chip seal is. We do, we don't go out and repaint the road and then cover it with chip seal. Chip seal is just trying to seal the road.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't lag stuff before that actually stayed, but.
It, it's, it's the same process, this is a, a one, we used to use three-eighths, I believe this is half an inch, so that's an eighth of an inch larger rock, and, uh, they had to put using the three-eighths rock because it had lead in it. So, it's the same process, the same amount of oil, it's just a different rock. And there's always been excess rock that we have to go and sweep up, and, and probably you can't tell the difference from any other chip seal street in town, you know, two months after it's been put down.
I, I'd like to have your rock. I, I think we're getting more vapor of it there.
All right, any last questions for Tim? Ollie, you're up. Ollie, with a great picture of you in the AAA nineteen.
Oh, yeah. Um, I'm gonna let Amy strike first, um, about how she is utilizing Google AdWords for the center. She has some statistics, I'm just telling you what she should at first.
Um, at the first of the year, you approved, um, thirty thousand dollars in total, so five hundred dollars for six months, is that right? And, um, so, we're talking about from January one to now, um, we have about two hundred and twenty-one interactions, which is about, for about four, forty-four thousand impressions, which means forty-four thousand times people saw it, from what I understand. Interactions would mean they clicked or they called, or they, um, interacted with the ad in some way. Um, our total cost that we've spent thus far on these ads is well under a thousand, so, um, it's well under budget, and that's because I turned it off during the non-peak times. So, um, if I feel like I'm too busy to properly manage it, um, during the week, then I just turn it off completely, or otherwise, I usually leave it off like Monday through Tuesday, um, and then I turn it off Wednesday through Friday and turn it off for the weekend, um, because Wednesday through Friday are where our high click rates are. Um, we've also been changing the keywords to what's most effective, what gets booked on the most. Um, I geared most of the ads for two-day meetings and overnight stays, um, and I think I have about three event, uh, three meetings in particular booked from the Google AdWords.
What's your cost per click?
It varies depending on the day, but the average is two dollars.
Average two.
And it also varies depending on the types of keywords, like some keywords have higher cost per click than others, depending on like how, how many, how often they're searching for.
Mark, do you have any questions for? No, I'm not, don't, don't ask. I just felt like that would break down your alley, so.
I took some notes.
Oh, get to that. But any, you have questions? All right, thank you. Ollie?
Uh, Google AdWords for the convention visitors, we're all have not been being used over the summer months as much because of the fact that our click-through rate, our price per click was so high. Um, low end was ten to twelve dollars, and they were wanting fifteen dollars upwards because travel words spiked in cost, um, about the end of May. So, I have cut this back and been utilizing Facebook for advertising instead, and at a much lesser cost, we can also see the results of that a lot better, because we can pinpoint demographics better through Facebook, and, um, we're seeing some really nice results of that. And one of the exciting things for me at the CBB office, um, has to do with something that located in my office, and when I started in this position, we had been approved as a travel information center, a place to house and information for travel stops across the state. And Bank of America at that point in time was letting us utilize a small building on Main Street that belonged to them. They did not care for that building very well, and by the time they sold First Bank Kansas, I was routine and not enough water any time it would rain, and actually terribly ceiling tiles were, um, just caving in because of water in, in pieces all over the floor. I was constantly down there cleaning up messes. Um, we had people that were leaving the door open frequently because it was so hot in there in the summertime, and the bugs, you would go in and have to clean out bugs every day to bugs, because they would just flock there at night with the lights on. And sometimes I was either responsible for leaving the door open, because I would go prop it open during the day and then forget to go close it like that to be later in the evening. So it was just a hassle to keep up. First Bank Kansas came in, and they have done a very different job of maintaining the facility. They came in and immediately replaced the roof, uh, they replaced the deteriorated wood on the exterior, painted it. And just this past week, the Bethany students came in and painted the interior for me, and that was a cost that the CBB did take care of. First Bank Kansas is now going in, they're replacing all of the ceiling tile and lighting panels as well, so that will be new. Chris Lowry went in, and it mostly was expense replacement in their conditioning and, and the travel chaos. And so, right now, we have a really nice facility to utilize again. And as you drive by, you'll notice that there's a door panel that notes that First Bank Kansas, um, owns that facility and maintains it, and that the heating and air conditioning was provided by Chris. So, the purpose of setting out a door, you can see out of it still, it's the outdoors, but it pets you on the heat in the building, and so it's a lot more energy efficient. We have noticed a big difference in, um, just the heat in the building all around in the summer, so that's been really good. On another quick note, I have been working, um, just the last month, just on my Kansas Destinations special certification, which I decided I'm not like to get busy and just do, because I go to the meetings already, and I mean, a lot of things I just need to put off of reports and get mine, even though it's hard to do everything. So, and as I've been working on that, though, I got to thinking that, you know, really, there's no reason that as I'm worrying all of these things about other state stops, that I can't begin to put together ways that you can tour our state, making this work a midpoint for probably three or four tours of qualified stops. And so I'm currently looking at how I partner better with other communities to provide locally for five-day itinerary for travel across Kansas, that we can permit to group tour operators, and where they can look at all the possibilities if they go from maybe corner to corner or from these tours, mark this out. So, that's it. Any questions?
Questions for Ollie?
Thank you, Ollie.
Chief?
So I guess I wanted to touch, uh, briefly on, uh, Coffee with the Cup program that we started. We had it this last Saturday at the Whitey Cup, and it was a very large attendance. And I was very happy to see everyone show up. I know I got there at eight o'clock, because nobody could cop, so I was worried maybe no one would show up, but, uh, it was very well attended.
How many are officers coming in?
All of them. Mr. Paul is our coordinator.
Okay.
Uh, the Sheriff's Department recently started the program. It's a national program, uh, they're gonna be moving their Coffee with the Cup program throughout the county, so, um, it will be a while before they come back around to Lindstrom to have it here again. Uh, and, uh, so we decided that, you know, there's no reason we can't continue the program without the Sheriff's Department, so, uh, about every three months, we're gonna plan an event, uh, Coffee with the Cup, and, um, we've already had offers to have it at different locations in the community. I know Bethany College, uh, has already called and requested that they could put up lists to, uh, sponsor the event there, so, I'm kind of excited that it's, it's had some positive effects so far, so. Some of the things that came out of, uh, the coffee were, you know, some concerns, uh, and code violations seem to be, uh, an issue that some citizens are concerned about, so, uh, to the public, I guess if they should know, then they'll probably be putting a, uh, concerted effort to avoid code violations over the next, uh, month. Kind of crack down on that, also we can't, I think, sure.
Tim, code violations, we have property, uh, two forty coal, it still has some material left behind in the RV park, is that on your list of code violations?
It is. Right now, I'm just trying to get somebody to mow that area so I can see what's in it. Uh, so, we're in the process of hiring someone to mow that area. They've already put some letters, so.
And another question on mowing, I know they mowed the bait lot, but, you know, you look around the poles, and does mowing include trimming? Do they have to trim the weeds that are this tall around the poles, or are those optional?
I think it would, well, it should just consider it, well, it should.
So even though they mowed the bait lot out and they leave the stuff around the power poles and stuff, that's still, uh, still an violation?
We could potentially hire someone to kind of, and maybe trim it.
Okay. Other questions to the chief? Ollie, if I'm asked, did the new car make it through the program? Okay? Thanks, Sarah.
Yes.
I'm just glad to hear that, I'd hire, you know, hire them, I'll sure help. Thank you, Tim. Appreciate all you and your fellow officers do to keep Lindstrom safe. Others? Call for others? Mark, welcome to council. Have a taste of what we do and, you know, what happens here, a lot of it is done, we do study sessions and information that you receive via your iPad and all that, and so, anytime, please call me, your call grant, and Jerry, or any other council members, I'm sure they would love to work with you, and that, just welcome.
Thank you.
Any others? Question to adjourn? Then move it seconded, all those prepared to say aye?
Aye, aye.
And that was close. That was, I almost like made it an appointment. Uh, those, those, thanks a lot. Thank you. Want to get the deal?
Okay, I had some, yeah, I did.